Just to let anyone know in the public, if you ever have any state agency issues or need help with anything, we're always here for you. Again, it's Assemblyman Mike Morrell. So that's all I have for you guys today.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to schedule items. There are conflict of issue, uh, interest issues, but they will be dealt with for item number seven. Uh, we have item one, public hearing, time extension for tentative parcel map eleven dash ninety-two, community development.
This is, thank you, council. Um, this is a time extension tentative parcel map number eleven dash ninety-two and a precise plan of design, PPD number eleven oh nine. This is a one-year time extension, a request for a previously approved tentative parcel map and a precise plan of design for expansion of existing eighty-three-bed scale nursing facility. The project would include the construction of forty-six unit, um, which is fifty-three-bed assisted living residence with a secured memory care unit for up to twenty-eight residents. The parcel map would merge the existing par- project site with the adjacent site to the west to create one parcel totaling three acres. Um, the project is located at two-five-three-eight-three Cold Street in the institutional zone. Um, this has been previously approved and is only an ex- uh, no change to the project, no change to, um, any of the parameters of it. It's an extent, only a time extension for them to begin construction.
Can you elaborate on, uh, why it's kind of slowed down, what the, what the issue is?
Um, the applicant, uh, with the recession, with the, the economy that was going on, had some challenges getting financing in place to begin construction. Um, from what I understand, the financing is in place and they are, uh, ready to begin the design and, and blueprint process. So it's just taken them longer to put the pieces together.
So the recommendation is for a one-year extension? What's your pleasure? Do you have any other questions?
I'm ready to move it.
Go ahead. Oh, is there a public hearing?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll open the public hearing. Does the public wish to speak on this topic? No motion. Okay, close the public hearing.
I'll move the item.
I'll second it.
Okay, is there any discussion, any opposition? Hearing none, it's approved unanimously. Congratulations. And next item is the consent calendar.
I'll move it.
Okay, any discussion? Any opposition? I'm used to a bunch of no votes in this council, but okay, we'll, we'll take it. Unanimous approval. Okay. Old business, number seven, Council Bill R dash two thousand thirteen dash zero-two, a final parcel map on a seven-story parking structure. We need, uh, Councilman Popescu to have a quorum, and I believe what we will do is, how about if we adjourn to some of our other agendas temporarily? We'll go to...
Well, we can ask.
We can do reports of, of officers. You want to do that now?
Yes.
It's your suggestion. Go ahead. Give us an update on the VA situation.
The VA, um, VA is in the process, just about done with their due diligence on the property. It is in escrow with Louis Holmes. Louis is, has submitted paperwork to begin the general plan amendment and zoning requirements necessary to, uh, allow the building to be sited there. They've also, um, begun, uh, requests for proposal and bids for, uh, the developer to design and build the project. I believe that closes on the twenty-ninth of January. So, um, right now, we're getting inundated with information requests about what we're going to require as far as water, sewer, color of the building, and all the other stuff that goes with it. Um, but it, you know, it is picking up speed and, and they are headed to, uh, to get this thing started.
I just thought there may be some people in the public that would like an update on that. It's an exciting project. I mean, that's a major facility of over three hundred thousand square feet on Redlands Boulevard, and so it'll be a major addition to our community.
It's estimated that'll be the largest construction project in the inland empire when they, they get started, probably because there isn't much going on, but still it's, it's still a very, a very big building.
But there's the big courthouse, the state courthouse they're building too, that's...
That would be a big building.
Um, and then, uh, our sandbag representative, I still have people asking me what the status of the on-ramp, or I should say off-ramp and so forth.
I can, I can ask you that.
The, um, the phase one, which is under construction on the, the south side of freeway, there's a little delay due to the rain. The, as you can see, they have to extend the box over to widen the freeway. Also, the, uh, replace the, the trapezoidal channel with the box over so that they can widen the off-ramp. And with the, the rain that happened the past month, it's delayed the project quite a bit. So that's the south side of the freeway. The north side of freeway, which is phase two, I just received the plan for the ninety-five percent, uh, submitted this morning for the plan and specification. So that's ready. The, uh, they're in the process of acquiring it right away. They had to do emit domain to the property to the north of the freeway in the city of San Bernardino, so they do that right now, but the project still proceed. They have to, um...
Do they have to complete phase one before they begin phase two?
No, no.
So these can be simultaneous?
Yes, that's, that's why this is the final look at the plan and specification before they go out to bid. Uh, during the bidding process, on the north side of the freeway, they had, they said acquire two more pieces of property. One is a gas station on the east side of Anderson, uh, Tippecanoe, and another, uh, uh, mechanical shop just north of the, uh, the, uh, the gas station. The challenge is, they did the underground investigation and the, uh, the, at the, uh, the gas station, there's a, the contamination...
Contamination.
...due to the, uh, the gas tank leak, so sandbag had to take care of the, the cleanup also. But it looked like it's, it's on schedule for, go out to bid later on this, this year.
Very good.
So delays in phase one will not delay the entire project?
No, sir. No, it's, it's gone.
But we will have, we will have the long traffic lines forming to exit Tippecanoe for a while longer.
Yes. Can I go on with this project a little bit more?
Mm.
This, this afternoon, we had a pre-construction meeting for the hot scaping of the I-ten and Mountain View. Um, the contractor had to pull another permit with Caltrans, but it shouldn't take very long. We scheduled the construction to start on February the eleventh, so within a month, we can start. We have to get the sample of the rock and submit to Caltrans for review and approval, but it's, the cleanup is, is starting very soon. The, uh, memory care facility at the corner of Redlands, I mean, Orange Street and New Jersey, you drive by there, they poured a slab and, and boom, now that, the, all the wood are up, the framing's up. The trust was delivered this morning, so the trust will be go up pretty soon. The seven-story parking structure, they, um, they, they completed, they paved, they built the, uh, the Monar Way, um, but haven't kept the, the pavement yet. They are in the process of, uh, they did the footing, building the column, so, so that is, is moving along. The Stewart Street project, we completed the phase one of the two-phase of the storm drain, uh, pipeline. They laid a pipe, and the idea is to, uh, complete it, the, the storm drain section and then build the, the bridge above ground, and then after the bridge is completed, then they start excavation, so that, so that if it rained during the excavation, there's place for the water to go without having to do pumping the water out of pit and, and so forth. So that's our plan. And we already ordered a steel, uh, girder for the bridge, so it's in order, should be here within a month.
And we're projecting Stewart will be closed off...
I, I, probably in, in the month.
End of the month?
Yes.
And will be closed for, I know the whole project was originally projected at a year.
Yes, but now we, we in it for two months already, so another ten months.
Okay.
It's probably a good time, while we're talking about the, uh, the Tippecanoe project, to talk about, um, IVDA and the, the bridge at the end of Mountain View and where we're at with that too. So I don't know if either Councilman Daley or Councilman Popescu can address that. Where are we at with the bridge, the, Mountain View Bridge?
Yes, the, the, the bridge, or the thing is, the, uh, the, uh...
There was some problem, I think, with, with like an environmental impact study or something, correct?
This...
The money.
Yeah.
Just to be sure everybody's, uh, understands where we're talking, if you take Mountain View towards Norton Air Force Base, the old train bridge is now down and they're working on constructing a new bridge, so, go ahead.
And the purpose is basically to alleviate traffic when we really bog down Tippecanoe with the construction.
There may be an issue, but I'm not a hundred percent sure. I'll find out more about it tomorrow with the state asking that the IVDA not, it's an IVDA project and they don't want to expend funds because the state claims we're an RDA and, uh, they're rad- well, actually, they're not asking us for that money. We, we took out a bond to pay for it, but, um, there's other projects along that the state does not want us to, uh, move forward with. So we're actually, um, going to court with them to try to get a judge to rule in our favor. Otherwise, a few million dollars worth of projects come to a reaching halt, so I'm not a hundred percent sure that that project's included. I know the sheriff's facility is for sure, but, um, I'll learn more about it.
So I think the message is, even though we've had some light agendas in city council, there's a lot going on.
Yes, sir.
This is a very, very busy place right now.
Yes, yes, and the, uh, the property at the southeast corner of Mountain View and Barton Road, they already pulled a grading permit, so we start grading any time, so...
Thank you.
Okay, we can go back to item number seven. We need to ask Councilmen Lenart and Daley to leave because you're officially abstaining, or whatever you call it.
As for the record, they had previously disqualified themselves due to their employment with the applicant, uh, and we applied the rule of necessity to draw straws, and so the three remaining councilmen will participate.
Okay, we need the report from Public Works as soon as the door closes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, back in October night, uh, two thousand twelve, the city council did approve the tentative tract map, uh, number, I'm sorry, tentative parcel map, number one-nine-three-three-five, one-nine-three-three-two, I'm sorry. This is for the west side of Campus Street, south of University, east of San Lucas Drive, and, uh, north of San Juan Drive. And this is for the, uh, the seven-story parking structure that, uh, at that time, we have, uh, Prospect Street, and we have a couple of the building on the south side of Prospect. We combine the, the property on the south side of Prospect, vacate Prospect Street, and dedicate the, uh, Monar Way and to be able to build the seven-story parking structure. So this parcel map is doing all of that. So, so the staff is, is recommending the city council approve the Council Bill R two thousand thirteen dash O-two, then approve the fi- final parcel map number one-nine-three-three-two.
I'll move the item with a question.
Does there need to be a public hearing on it?
No.
I'll second.
I have one question. When did Monar Way acquire a first name?
It's, it's the, uh, it's from the fundraising...
I know it's from, I know, but I didn't realize there was a first name involved.
Yes.
Will that be on the signs?
Yes, yes, sir. She insisted that her name is...
But nobody lives on the street, um, so it won't affect any post office issues?
No.
Okay.
I was just curious, when we approved the project initially, was not the parcel map approved at that point?
No, we approved the, uh, the tentative.
I see. And then what, what transpired since then to actually make it final then?
It's just timing to, to get review and approve, that's all. And, and it really for the financing of the, the project also.
I see. Okay.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion, any opposition? Hearing none, it's approved unanimously. Congratulations. We're left with the city council agenda, having reports of councilmen. Let's get the other gentleman back.
They were having fun talking.
Did you guys have anything?
Just making a comment that, um, I'm enjoying the new format with, with how we, uh, we put the share up there with the agenda, and it's so much easier to access it on my laptop versus the iPad, but, but I am very thankful for it being in electronic form so I can just easily move my mouse.
Try, we try to please everybody, so...
Any other councilmen?
I like it on the iPad.
Okay, is that, is that motion?
I just happened to forget mine.
I, I have mine, but it just doesn't work as usual. Um, okay, reports of officers beyond what has already been said. Okay, then the city council's adjourned. We'll move next to the successor agency. Are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Would the public like to speak on anything about the successor agency? Okay, no comment. Uh, we'll go to the consent calendar. Okay, there's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion, any opposition? Hearing none, it's approved. We go to item three, Council Bill R dash two thousand thirteen dash zero-three, review and approve independent accountant's report regarding the due diligence review.
Mayor council members, um, this is the second report we need to do as part of the dissolution of the redevelopment agency. Um, we use the same audit firm, Markham, um, who is our city auditor, to perform the, this agreed-upon procedure that's required. Um, before you is the action to adopt the resolution, um, two thousand thirteen oh three, approving the independent accountant's report regarding the due diligence review of all funds and accounts other than the low mod housing funds, which were previously approved in the due diligence report that specifically was targeted to housing-related funds. Um, we are asking for you to authorize us to transmit to the oversight board and the county auditor controller, the state controller, and the Department of Finance. Um, we did, because of the timing and when the due date of the report, we, we are required to submit it to a final report approved by the oversight board on January fifteenth. Because of the timing and the required five days between presenting it to them and then another meeting, having them approve it, we actually presented it to the oversight board yesterday at the meeting. Um, they received it, they had some comments on it, and, um, so we will be meeting again with them on January fourteenth for the final approval, and then we will be submitting it on January fifteen, which is the deadline.
Does that conclude the dissolution process then? Or do we have more steps?
Not quite. Um, we will submit this, then they, the, the state will review it. If they have any comments or they disallow any items, then we go through the meet and confer process, and at that point, then we wait, will present our arguments as to why we don't agree with them, and, and hopefully, you know, receive a final conclusion on that. We also have what's called a property management plan to put together, which Public Works and Economic Development are working on right now. And basically, it's any residual properties that we have, what are we, what's the plan for them, and what's, what will we be doing with those properties. Um, so those items have to be finalized and approved. Um, the state does have till April first, um, to give us what's called a finding of completion, and hopefully, at that point, we can then go into just a, a regular routine process of performing the ROPS, and, and so that will be the conclusion of basically the wind-down process of closing out the RDA, and then we'll just go into successor agency operation mode, basically.
There's kind of symmetry that it would conclude on April Fool's Day.
Can, can the ROPS be modified down the road at all? Can, can there be things that they, final, final approval that they come back and change or disapprove next year? So this really still is an ongoing game with them?
They can disapprove from six months, we submit every six months.
Yes.
They can approve from one to the next, and so, yeah, it's...
That was a problem that I have with the IVDA, where they approve ROPS one and two, and for three, they, they said, no, they reversed those two. That's why it's, it's...
Which can also work in our favor, because we actually had an item on ROPS three that was previously disallowed but then approved, ROPS three.
What's kind of interesting, and I'm just, if there should be anybody that maybe represents the state in any way present in this auditorium, it'd be, uh, good to probably listen to this.
I had a question regarding the housing. So the, to, in this audit, basically, we need to show them what our housing funds are? Is that just of it?
Not in this report. This was for all other funds, not housing. We presented the housing previously. And we also have gone through our meet and confer because they, they were disallowing about two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Um, one was part of, about one thirty-nine was related to a property purchase that happened, well, that was closed after the end of the year, but had been previously approved and, uh, I guess, in contractual obligation, state, um, prior to the dissolution. So, so we were able to get that reversed, and then there were cash balances that they disagreed on us with for the balance. So we were able to get from two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to forty-four thousand dollars, basically.
And do we owe them any money? Because I know some city where, cities were asked to return some of the housing money. Do we have that situation?
We, we, the forty-four thousand.
Out of the two seventy-five that we had in our account? Okay.
Well, the two seventy-five was their initial adjustment, saying that that, that's the money we would owe them. And then when we went through the meeting confer process, it, we got it down to the forty-four.
What was the remaining balance that was left after that in our housing fund?
That, that's it. That's what they, they determined to be our remaining balance, and that's then what gets distributed to the taxing entities.
But I thought that our housing fund had about three hundred thousand dollars in there. No?
This is different money you're talking about. The, uh, the two seventy is the one that they want that money back.
I understand that part, but I thought that we had an addition, we had an existing low mod housing balance of about three hundred thousand. No?
No. Are you thinking maybe the, the housing authority?
It's possible, but I thought that's all interrelated.
No, the housing authority, basically, they, they, when we formed the housing authority, they were tran- transferred in were the properties that...
Correct.
...that we owned. They are generating some revenue as we, we recoup loans that have been outstanding and, and individuals that have purchased those properties make payments on those loans. So that's the money that they're using to operate at this point.
But I thought that we're still keeping twenty percent of property taxes for low mod, mod housing.
Uh-uh. That, that actually ended as of, um, July first, two thousand twelve.
Okay, but do we not have a balance in the account in relationship to some of those funds at that point?
No.
No? Okay.
Currently at zero.
Okay.
Diana, can you point out the summary, which to the, to the, the board member under exhibit ten, yeah, oh, one? This is the summary of the audit, so you know where we are at financially with the, uh...
So, so the auditor basically perform, they, they determine all our, our assets, our cash, our cash equivalents, and we present all our financial activity, and they look at it, um, through the dissolution of the RDA, and then they were required to perform basically nine, ten procedures. The eleventh procedure was basically that they had to get a representation letter from us. Um, so they performed the ten procedures, um, based upon schedules that we provided, then they would require us to provide them evidence of, of those items. So basically, you had to list all your assets, and then you had to list any obligations against those assets. So, so basically, it's, it's basically to determine any unobligated funds at the dissolution point or, or June thirtieth of, of the successor agency to be, basically, if you have any unobligated funds that are available, those then get transferred to the taxing entities. So once we went through this process and we basically ended up with a negative one point one million because of what we believe, what we believe to be obligations that are out there. So the state can come back and say, no, we don't believe that to be an obligation, and basically disallow items at that point. So, and there are a couple of potential items out there that they can disallow at this point. We're, we're stating we believe that, that those were obligations, and that's how we want to file. The, the oversight board can also tell us no, and a majority can vote that we need to change the report based upon their interpretation of what's an obligation and what's not. So... So, this is Shaw. So basically, the one point one million basically is what we determined to be, that the redevelopment agency did not have enough cash to operate because of the way, when the dissolution act came into effect, basically, the, the state said, you should have had enough money to fund six months in advance, and we didn't have that money six, to fund six months' operation in advance. Any, any revenue we received as of July first, two thousand eleven, basically, became to fund our next ROPS, which started in January. So we were six months short of operational funding, which we were still operating as a redevelopment agency until January of two thousand twelve. So that's where that shortfall, what we believe to be the one point one million, comes into play. And how we basically will, the recommendation to cover it is to do a new loan from the city to the agency, which will fall under a different repayment option through the successor agency. So there's a repayment in the, in the statute that allows new loans to be repaid over a certain period of time, so we can put it on our ROPS and get repaid, that new loan, where, um, the previous existing loans under AB fourteen eighty-five, once we get this finding of completion, we can start getting repaid in thirteen fourteen, two thousand thirteen fourteen, I believe, um, if there's any residual receipts after all the ROPS are met, all the pass-throughs are paid, and if there's anything left out, that's... paid, and if there's anything left at that point, then there's a formula in there that we can get repaid on those previous loans that the city had made to the redevelopment agency.
But that sounds better than the original deal, which was you don't get any of it back.
The one thing is, we do on those previous loans, we had to go back and recalculate them based upon life rate, so they are under significantly, significantly reduced from what we had been carried on the books.
Because of interest rate reductions?
Yes.
What interest rate did they allow us to carry?
They said life, so we had to go back and when the principal was outstanding...
So it's about four instead of twelve or whatever?
Yeah.
I was just looking at one of these obligations, and I just had a question just because it sparked something. Riverside County property taxes?
Yes.
What property do we have in Riverside County? The hills?
In the South Hills.
Okay, so would anyone like to make a motion to approve this report?
I will make a motion that we approve and accept this report.
Second.
I'll slightly amend that to authorize staff to make any submissions or any reports and all that type of thing, because that was something else you needed, correct?
Thank you.
Okay, and that was amended in the second? Assuming it is. Is there any discussion on this item? Any opposition? Hearing none, it's approved unanimously. That comes to the end of the successor agency agenda, so that's adjourned. We go to the Housing Authority agenda. Are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Would the public like to speak on anything regarding housing? Note takers? Consent calendar?
I will move it.
Okay, discussion? Any opposition? Hearing none, it's approved. Are there any member reports? Any reports of officers? Not, we're adjourned, and I think that's it. We're done. Thank you all for coming.